Father, we thank you for this day, for all the blessings we have, Lord. School is up and running, Lord, and I just ask for a special blessing over all the kids and the staff. Lord, I pray that you would instill in these kids a desire to want to be there, a desire to want to learn, to get along with everybody, to be respectful to everyone, and that they just have a great year. Lord, we always want to ask for a special blessing over our military who serves and just sacrifice so much, and their families sacrifice so much as well. Lord, we ask that you bless this meeting and help us be attentive to your nudging so that we would make decisions that would be pleasing to you, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cory, do you have a sound off?
Yep.
Motion in a second, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried now.
Does it work and learn?
Yeah, it is.
Amazing.
When you turn it on, it works.
You know today was twenty seconds?
We have a small item we should have taken care of last week that got buried over here. This is from our insurance, and best I understand it, there's a deductible that exceeded fifteen dollars and sixty-one cents. They want to dip into the aggregate amount, so we need a... I would make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
Motion in a second, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried now.
Chad Green?
Okay.
I make a motion to hire Rocky Ross, utility two operator, three and seventeen dollars per hour.
Have a motion in a second, all of them in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried now.
Next thing I have, I thought I had four copies, but I have two. Couple weeks ago, it was presented... Or I was contacted by a dump truck that was set up from Innes, Battalion, or Muni, and they ordered a bunch, or a few, and they didn't get, followed through with it. So there's a truck available. I was looking for a truck. We do have a, one of our freight liners, the twenty fifteen, twenty eleven or twenty fifteen. Anyway, transmission's going out of roughly thirty grand per transmission. Just so you guys know. This is seven years, thirty-four a year. That's half the price of the last one that we purchased, dump truck. So basically, what I'm asking is, I don't want to do any more research into it. I asked for information on the warranty. I'm still waiting on that information. That's why I presented what I have so far, because if you think it's not possible, then I don't want to waste any more of my time or their time. And like I said, it's already set up with spreader, plow, like what we would get. There's no eight month, eight month waiting period. And my goal would be to have warranty on that truck for the entirety of it. And it would be alert, lease, buyback option, but the goal would be not to buy back to renew the lease. But this would be something out of my own budget. And I truly feel at that price, we're spending that on dump trucks now for upkeep. And then on trade-ins, which, for what we get on trade-in, it's not really worth trading in what we have, it's more worth, like the one per se that's got the transmission issue. Once the transmission finally went, it would get parked out back and used for parts. The other thing is Jimmy, our truck mechanic, that stress was being for about a year now about how hard it is to get parts for those models, the freight liners that we have.
You're still looking at one of the options, though, with this?
Yeah, I still don't know. I'm not asking for a signature anything today, I'm just asking if it sounds feasible to you guys.
Thirty-four to a year is the lease for...
Seven years.
Seven years, and then basically...
We could buy it back for a hundred at the end, but we can just renew that lease.
And just replace the truck?
And just replace the truck, and you're back in. Yeah, you're back in, same lease period. But I explained to him the need for the warranty, just because, you know.
Is it seven or six years?
I thought it was seven. Oh, it's seventy-two months.
Seventy-two months. Seventy-two months.
Yeah, seventy-two, Cory, I just spoke on that. But just like anything else, I was trying to get it where it could be handled out of my own budget for a little bit of money spent on basic maintenance. But whenever we go to do jobs and everything, it's like right now with basketball, that's our biggest hindrance. You get something that you need a dump truck for, or gravel road or something. Strap for trucks. And for reference, that's half the price of the Kenworth that we purchased.
Yeah, I was really shocked to see that price amendment, says it comes with the spreader and plow.
And then expressed concerns over just talks I've had with people that are in the know about the price of parts and stuff, because I'm not a Mac, I don't know anything about them. I know that whenever I look at it, it looks quality built, it looks quality truck. And his reply to that, although this is just a text, and he said that they have the cheapest labor aid in Joplin, and their parts are significantly cheaper than Cummins and Peckard. Again, that's just, whenever I was asking about the warranty, I mentioned this too. That's just a statement that was made. I had no facts on that, other than a text message from the guy supporting.
When you know what you want, do you think?
I don't know, I asked him to have it before done, but I couldn't get it. But I mean, honestly, I want to, if it's something that's doable, I want to talk with freight liners as well. You know, I already know what my third bid is with Mastercraft, that's who we purchased the Kenworth through. But I mean, to get that third bid, I got to get a hold of freight liners and see what they can do. But then, again, you go back to the need versus the availability, you know. And for all I know, they have one ton actually. It might be any more. And like I said, that transmission issue that we just found, I was told it was patched. So I mean, it's one of them deals, how long will it last? And it's one of those things where, is the truck worth paying thirty thousand dollars?
What year is it?
Which, the ones we're having trouble with? It's either an eleven or a fifteen. Can't remember, it just happened on my own cover. I just want to do more research, I want to do research if it's... I don't want to do all the groundwork, plus bother them with all their time. If it's something that you guys don't want to go with, I'd rather not know.
Bring them in the budget board.
Well, I mean, just even this year in the budgets, the paper's been great, so... And we made the trailer purchase and that, and the extra excavator purchase, which we do not need those every year. So I mean, there's money for upgrades already there, you know what I mean, from the savings, but what we have within. But honestly, I think this is paying for it, just in upkeep of the truck. We're not, we're not gaining another truck per se, because I don't want to say that because the transmission could go out at any second. But for a short time at least, I know we're gaining a truck. And then, even whenever that transmission goes down, or that truck goes down, for a high cost of repair, the goal is this one won't be in the shop for repair, and it'll be around another day. Plus, it can actually haul up.
The biggest thing is, if it needs repaired, then it's covered in warranty and a lease program. That's the biggest thing, making sure that what the damage program is.
And this price is on standard warranty, which I mean, it shouldn't affect that number much with the, you know, premier type warranty, but that's the info I'll get back. But I mean, I think we paid like sixty-two for the Kenworth a year right now.
Just to move forward and find out the warranty?
Do you guys have anything for me?
I do not. Oh, do we have a striping date?
No date. The contact, or the info of what I want to done was sent to the guy. I have no response back yet. They're leveling up on Quaker this morning. That's our goal. I've been trying to get in contact with the railroad to schedule them to be there for the issue on Star. West of Action, but no luck yet there. So worst case, I guess we just got to do the...
You know what temperature we need to have to apply that?
I don't... Really?
The striping.
Oh, no, not exactly, but they can, they can run a lot lower temperatures than what the things that go.
Anything, Cory?
I do.
No.
Have a great day.
We're early, but are the Gibsons here?
Yes.
Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning, have a good chair.
Several concerns. I guess we're going to start with the biggest one. I purchased a house in Colom, or excuse me, Riverton, sixty-nine, twenty-four, South East Seventy Second Terrace. Before I purchased the home, I believe the law was not in, or excuse me, yeah, in effect, and they got sold to somebody, and then I bought it from that person. And when we tried to call and pay, we came down here and did everything. They said there was eleven hundred dollars in taxes, I was okay with. Obviously, I didn't pay yet, so it went up to thirteen hundred, which again, I'm okay with. They said that was all that we owed, just like last week, that's why we made this appointment. And then come to find out, they didn't misled me, or learned themselves, or lied, either way you want to say it, finding out that there's more charges to do with sewage and water that goes with the property. And then the law, she said, changed in twenty twenty-five, saying it goes to the new homeowner. And I said, I bought the house before twenty twenty-five. So that's irrelevant. And then she said, I said, why didn't you turn the sewage and water off? This is from two thousand nineteen. She said, we can't. And she said, today, when we tried to pay, last week, excuse me, we tried to pay, she said, it's okay, I'm going to go down and put a lien on there. I said, well, I'm trying to call and pay the thirteen hundred bucks. And she's like, oh, no, you owe me thirty, thirty-nine hundred, almost, I think it was almost right around, I don't know, our first estimate, let's go back to this one. She gave us a first estimate, which it took us all this time to get a documented printout from her saying what charges are what. But the first one was significantly higher than the one she just gave us about ten minutes ago. And she did give us an atomized bill of it, but she said, when I told her, why didn't you turn it off? I, in an electric company, would have turned the power off before twenty twenty if no one paid. She said, we can't. We just looked up the lien, and it says they can't turn off the water and the sewage, which they yet did. And the late fees for not paying a debt that I did not know was owed, even from the time I purchased the home, are more than the actual service by, like, four hundred and forty, something fifty-two bucks. And basically, what I'm saying is, if you don't want to consider lying, because I'm a nice person, it was definitely misleading, and the manager didn't even know. And today, just today, we got the runaround to go to that office, then this office, because no one knew where she was at. And she said she was on her way up here today to do the lien, which again, I'm okay with, because we looked up the lien, and she said she couldn't turn the water sewage off this whole time. But now we look at the law, and they say they can turn the water and septic off, or sewage off. And then I said, well, why didn't you turn that off in two thousand eight, or twenty twenty, when you didn't get paid? Why'd you wait until twenty twenty-five, when I called to clean up the property? Right? Because I've already two thousand dollars into cleaning the property to make the community good when we came down there, right? You guys talked about a twenty thousand dollar, like, thing to help, you know, help the community. And then, like, every time we go, we get kicked back with just fees that no one told us about. And they said it could have been withdrawn, or you would have known about it if you did a title company. I called the title company, they were at four thousand dollars. I said, look, this is all I owe on it. I went to this apartment, this apartment, and he was like, no, you do exactly what we did. You're good then, there's no point in paying me. That's what that gentleman said.
The title company said they needed four dollars?
No, 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 it was like, I think it was twenty-five hundred dollars, but he was going to do a couple other things for me, but to come down here and check everything. And then I said, well, this is everywhere I check, what else can I do? I'd rather just do the footwork myself and save up the money. He said, you basically did everything I did. So I came back, did it one more time, just to make sure, went back and checked the property to make sure it was a good investment, you know, because I'm, you know, nervous, a little bit of money, in my opinion. And everything checked out, and then I come back ten months later to clean up the property, do two squatters, and we get hit with that. And then, when we said, well, why didn't you turn it off? And she said, we can't. Now she's doing a lien, and now she's turning it off. Then she said, the law changed, where now it goes to the taxes. And I said, but that, all right, to the taxes. But I said, that law changed before I bought the house. So when the house got sold twice, and then sold to me, it should have stuck with them two, so I would have known about it, not hidden fees around the corner. Because nobody in this office knows about her office, because they said, yesterday, she was a witness, yesterday, or last week, again, that she was, she thought the taxes and everything were all together. And she, the manager, found out it's not. So that's misleading people to try to come in and fix up a community.
So they thought that, when they had to print out our tax information, they told us, oh, this is all you owe. But when I told them, I spoke to Jamie, and she said her amount for usage was way more than what this tax was. So then they issued up to her as well, and then they're like, we don't know that the special assessments did not include the toll on the sewer usage and the taxes.
One thing I want to separate immediately, you've mentioned water several times, and we don't have anything to do with water. I don't know if the water district has fees of coming...
Sewage and water, she's supposed to. Bridge and maintenance, right? Which is sewage, she said. Her office has bridge and maintenance, but literally, she, I'm not giving you, she handles a coup.
But I just want to clarify that, and as far as turning off the sewer, we have absolutely no method of doing that. We've not turned sewer off anywhere for individual, we just don't have a, we don't have the shut offs.
That makes sense, so then, so basically, that exists. When someone sells a house, and the house stays vacant, you just continue racking up charges?
It does. That's the, that's the way it was set up how many years ago. Some of them, that dates, or, I don't know. But in the water districts, several of the water districts do the same thing, whether you occupy it, whether you use that water or not, you pay the minimum monthly bill. It's charged to that. And we run into this a lot, unfortunately, that, it sounds like you folks are from out of town, but...
Yeah, but we... I'm from Arizona.
Yeah, but I mean, we've done talk to everybody in here, and no one even told us about that. And then, for the bridge and maintenance, when I called, when I first bought the house, because it guttered with flood, and that's not, that's county, it took forever to get, and it's still not fixed. And that's the same lady.
What is it that's not fixed?
The, in front of my property, we're a corner lot, and the rain goes through, and that gutter has collapsed, the piping. And I called and called.
The ditch?
Yes, the culvert. And so it floods up into my house, and I called and called and called, and they came out with a tractor. I thought they fixed it, they did not. So then I got a pump to pump the water from my little basement, because it floods over. And it's the same lady. I get that the charges are going to be stuck there, but it don't make sense how the late fees are more than the usage. That makes no sense.
If it happens, I mean, if they accumulate...
Accumulate over time, they add up.
Yeah, but if the law weren't in effect, or it should have been a lien, it should have been a lien with the lady's name before mine, if that's when the law came into effect. So if the law weren't in effect today, how many days do they have before they actually do it?
The law just allows it to be transferred to taxes. It doesn't have anything to do with a particular program that was set up when the individual sewer district was set up.
So, yes, but it lets it go to taxes, right? So then, then I would have been notified when I purchased the house, because it should have been on taxes, that's what I'm saying, someone dropped the ball. If the law weren't in effect today, how many days do you guys got, or they have, to put it on taxes? Because this is how it came about. I literally came down here, I got a complaint from the neighbor that there's squatters in theirs real bad. I spent two thousand dollars with a dumpster, a vacuum, cleaning up everybody else's trash, which I called the police, and they said they got squatter rights. That's, that's what they said. They would not get them out of the house. When I came back, I squatted myself, and I got them out myself. Now, that being said, if they would have did it when the law wasn't in effect, then I would have known about it before I bought the house. If they would not have told me that this is all the taxes, when I went and talked to every apartment here, they didn't know that that was included. They didn't, I mean, no one could even tell them where her office was at. So I'm just saying, like, how are people supposed to come and invest into this, this county if you're going to hit them with, with late fees that, in my opinion, I mean, I get it, but you guys said that you can't, she said she could not turn off the sewer, you said you couldn't turn off, she said she couldn't turn off water. We looked up the lien, because she wants to put a lien on there.
Again, we have nothing to do with water.
So she's just a... So if she says she can't turn it off, then why is online saying that they're going to turn it off and we can't? That's, that's what makes sense, so, okay. So if it's just, so basically, what they're going to say is, the lien is going to go on taxes. So this next time this, this bill goes on taxes, I have to pay it, or eventually I forfeit the house, correct?
Could, it could go up for taxes if the taxes remain unpaid?
Well, I'm going to pay the taxes, but that, other part that I gave him is not taxes. That's what I'm trying to say, I'm trying to, I'm trying to fight that, I'm not trying to fight the taxes. I was aware of the taxes. That was unaware, and that price that you have on that paper went down eleven hundred dollars since we asked for an atomized paper. It went down eleven hundred bucks, because I said, I'm not paying nothing unless you have proof of what it is, itemized. And that's, in my opinion, that's, that's wrong. How do people also invest? You know, it's just like when we came down here and talked to the same lady that did not, was not aware, is the manager over here?
Was there, did you check the electric bill when you bought the property with the, today?
The, the electric bill, I put in my name, it was under construction power, so when the squatter...
That doesn't transfer to the new owner anyway?
No, no, the electric don't transfer.
That's a big disadvantage of not being in a, you know, buying something and you're not familiar with that jurisdiction, the different entities, and how they operate, because it sounds like you did run into the very same thing with the water.
No, no, we have not had a problem with the water. I thought sewage and water was the same, apparently, just a sewage. So she's sewage and ditch.
But some of these rural water districts, you will run into the very same policy. I don't know if they're all that way, but they do, if, it doesn't, that fee is every, every month.
You pay a minimum every month.
No, I get that, but I'm not, I'm not fighting the fee of every month.
I know, but then the people you bought it off, were they current with it?
No, and neither were the people before that, and the law wasn't in effect when they owned it. That's what I'm trying to say, so how come the lien wasn't put on when the law went into effect?
The law just sheds light on, gives another opportunity and a method to collect it,
but it has nothing to do with the fact that the rules of the sewer district are that monthly fees are incurred, whether you use it or not. That's their privilege.
And rural water is the same way, too.
Yes, that's their privilege to establish those rules, and it really, as far as I can see, has nothing to do with the state law and how they, whether or not they can collect it when taxes are not.
Your rural water is set up, it's a, you pay a minimum if you don't use water. You pay a minimum.
Yes.
And if you don't pay that minimum, they'll pull a meter.
Yes. Okay. Okay, so, this is what I'm saying. If it hasn't been paid, and they can pull a meter, I'm going to have them pull the meter.
We can't pull a meter, there is no meter for the subject.
For the subject.
Okay, but for, for like, okay, for the subject, so you can't pull a meter. So the, that, that's what I'm saying. So she's literally, when I tried to pay it, and then I asked for atomized bill, and she dropped the bill. Right? Because I asked for an atomize. So she lowered the bill over a thousand dollars.
Jimmy, can you shed any light on that?
I don't know where you're getting the three thousand something from, I don't know where that bill... Right now owed is two thousand nine hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-one cents.
Yes.
I don't know where we're getting the three thousand and something, I don't know, maybe that's taxes. You do owe twenty eleven taxes, right? That's the only year you owe on that property.
No, it's twenty twenty-two, they didn't say twenty eleven, that's what I'm saying. On this paperwork, it's only twenty twenty-two. So every time we come and talk to somebody, they change it.
Fees for the...
I mean, and we're just taking copies from people.
Were over three thousand and something, and I said, but...
Pretty close, would average three thousand, I didn't give you an exact amount, I know what I'm thinking.
And then you're like, yeah, and the taxes was separate, it's different from that, I'm exact. So, yeah, so, yeah, it was well over three thousand for combined with the taxes.
So that, that's the thing, so it's twenty twenty-two. Now, we've already asked this five times about what was owed, and now she's saying twenty eleven. So if I'm paying this, is the problem?
I asked if it was twenty eleven. When I called up here, I thought the only year owed on taxes was twenty eleven, because I was checking. Because if you look on the back of this, every year, it's been put on the taxes up to twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, but then the paper that they gave us is only twenty twenty-two. But this is what I'm saying, if I walk back down to his office and ask him to turn out, I guarantee I'll get something different.
Can I read that? We printed it out a couple times first.
No, we, we printed it out a few times, and this is what I'm trying to say, and then everybody says they don't know. And I'm okay with paying a bill, I'm not trying to not pay a bill, I'm trying to invest into this property. But if I pay a bill, and then I come back, and you guys say, oh, you owe this, when will the bleeding stop? Because right now, I'm only like fifteen grand into it, and I can look away to get my money back now without paying anything and just selling off. Because so far, even with the squatter rights, right? They wouldn't turn off my power if they squatted, even though I told them to.
My bad, I thought it was twenty eleven.
Somebody moved in there, and then I got stuck with that bill too. Which again, I'll pay, but when I call the police to get them out, there's literally nothing they can do. And the power company said it couldn't turn off power because it's winter, human rights. So basically, I learned this from Kansas. I'll never be homeless. I might be crippled, I might not have a job, but I will squat everywhere for free. I learned it. That's your guys' laws, but I'm just saying, every time we come, which this is the fourth time, we always get something different, and I'm not going to pay no more money until I can, somebody can tell me this is point blank, zero question mark, nothing else can be added of what I owe.
Well, all I can say is that the sewer system is the only thing that this board has control of, so...
I would like to ask, because of last year, twenty twenty-four, we did change the laws, where we no longer put it on the taxes, we put a lien on the property. In October this year, that will happen. I've had several of them, I've reached out to, that have contacted me, and we've worked out payments to where I didn't know, just like with him, you moved from another state, another, even another town in Kansas. If it's, you have a sewer, it's in with your trash. It's not separate, you know, and your trash is in with your water. Riverton is confusing for a lot of people that move into Riverton, because it's unincorporated, your sewer is separate. He was not, he was not told when he purchased the property of all the separates. So I would like to ask that two years of sewer is what he pays. I would like to ask that the late fees be dropped, and he pays two years of sewer, and that would be one thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars.
That's a lot better, that's a lot better.
He purchased it in March of this year, I will add that too.
So it hasn't been that long, and I am going to go drop this stuff off, and like she said, I could sue the other person, you know, because I do believe that they did know about it, and I do believe it was a scam or whatever.
I do too. I honestly do, because...
March of twenty twenty-five, when were you bought?
Yeah, March of this year.
I don't know when I bought it, I'm sorry. It was there, I'm sorry. Basically, the only reason why I left when squatters took over...
When you bought it, it's showing.
March twenty twenty-four.
March twenty twenty-four. And the only reason why I was gone for these ten months is I had medical issues and I had to leave. And then I came back, and I literally came back to squatters, I mean, so much trash, I mean, it's crazy. And then when I called the police, because, you know, I could see them on my camera, they come down, and they're, I'm like, man, I get hassled around this whole time, and I'm a investor, so before I pull the trigger and pay her and do house stuff, I need to make sure, once I start paying, no one's going to come out, no offense, like, you know, she came out of the woodworks. Because at a certain point, I'm before, basically, at this point in the money I have into it, if there's any more charges, it's not worth it, I'll pull, I'll sell, and before I sell, I'll make sure I get my money out one way or another. I'll pull, I'll sell, and before I sell, I'll make sure I get my money out one way or another, right? Whether it's getting sued or not, like it's, it's that simple. I don't know where else to go, but I feel like for investors, it's just like when we came down here, they literally gave us the wrong information, right, last week? And then they literally said, oh, but if you spend $20,000 and you, it's your money, not a loan, and you spend it on the house the way we see fit, we'll knock off 95% of your taxes for the next five, seven years. And I said, and then after that, you're going to charge me for the $20,000 in taxes? So why would I tell you how much money I put in my property? To make my tax work.
I have to wait.
Well, you can't, you, only from the outside, though.
And I don't know where the confusion came, that people just pay their sewer when they pay their taxes. We've had so much of that. We've learned that, you know, we pay your sewer in. So there's a lot of lien holders out, out there that's paying sewer, their sewer bill for them, because they have no idea. But this property has been that way since 2009. They've paid the sewer when they paid, paid their taxes.
I want to say thank you because this, this property has been a thorn in our side.
So please, 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 like, literally...
I go by there just every couple of weeks or so.
It was so bad this time.
Uh, we know, we know.
It was so bad in 10 months. 10 months!
Uh, the neighbors have put up with that for so long and it's just been a blessing that you guys have cleaned it up.
We're, we're trying, I want to put more into it. Like, we got an investment for, uh, the roof. But literally, the roof would be as much as that taxes. And that's me doing the work to buy the materials. And that's the problem. That's the next thing. Once we figure this out, since we get the roof on, I plan on moving in. Because I can fix it when I wake up in the middle of the night because I have to go to the bathroom, you know?
You, you have good neighbors down there. But that being said, I want to see what you guys think. Probably can predict where I stand on this because I, we've had many, many people come in here and ask us to waive because of not knowing, lack of, you know, neighbors.
That's not fair.
But the fees, we have not waived for anybody since I've been on this board. And my biggest concern is setting a precedent. I mean, you know, I...
Honestly, even if you guys choose not to waive it, if you can just go through and, and notify all these ladies or people that are working here to let them know that what she said is correct.
Yeah.
And, and what they were telling me all this time is false. That's, that's wrong. That was misleading. Rather, if you don't know, it's easy to say, I don't know. You don't just assume stuff. Because she, she taught me a valuable lesson about assuming.
Well, we can do a better job of educating, hopefully. All these other departments are independent of us. They're elected officials, but they do want to serve the public. They've done a wonderful job.
No, she felt very bad when she found out it was...
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, she called me. Nikki called me Friday.
They truly do want to give excellent, they give service to the public beyond, I'm sorry that happened. But my personal opinion is I'm not in favor of waiving anything for that very reason. Because we've had people come in several times a year for the very same thing. Where do you, I mean, there's our luck stories and I'm sorry this happened to you. And I'm so thankful that you've invested, not just invested in our community, but in this particular property that has been...
Honestly, if I would have known how bad it was, like, like, I'm telling you right now, there was not very good people that owned this property. Um, all the way to the murderer that was there down by the river. If I would have known all that, I probably would have pulled out. Because the neighbors are nice, except for one. One that's already went to jail. We tried to put a string order, it's been failed on, so we're going to go back and rewrite that string order. Um, that's the only problem I have, which I understand where he's coming from. I told him, I get where you're at. You've probably seen this for the last 30 years and you've dealt with a lot of bad people. But I am not a druggie. I do not do drugs and I don't live like that. So every time we got high, so we just called the police. You know what I'm saying? So I, you, you do it, that's a beautiful street. It's, man, it's awesome. Dollar store, kids at school right there, loved it. And that's why I bought it, to, to raise my kids.
It's a great street.
So I'm not, I'm not asking necessarily for it to be, I'm just asking for, who do we got to talk to where maybe when, when they print this paper out, it says, call this lady first?
Yes.
You know what I'm saying? Something, so everybody else is not coming in having this problem. I'm sorry, I don't know your lady and I don't...
That's okay.
It reminds me of Jody. You know, it confuses me. Jody, Jody. So, I mean, I guess that's what I'm asking is how can we go around, maybe just put a flyer on their desk while everybody's filling out their taxes, saying that sewer, sewer and water, your water, ma'am, too? No, sewer. Sewer is not on this at all. And that way, everybody can know and then they'll probably stop coming here and complaining.
Well, again, we'll see if we can't do a better job of sharing it with them.
I appreciate you guys.
We appreciate you so much. We really do for bringing that to our attention and especially that, cleaning up that property and just...
Did you see drive by recently?
Uh, within a week, yes.
Okay, yeah. That was, that was three days.
We're still working.
That was three days. The only reason why we stopped is because I was scared someone would say, oh, like 50 grand, I was just going to walk away. Because, you know, you get what I'm saying? I just don't want no more. So this being said, this is for sure, everything that's owned on it, you and everybody else that's on it?
Well, except you might want to contact Water. You might want to contact them. I don't know what Water's doing. But as far as us, as far as sewer and taxes.
Water District 9?
Yes.
I think it's Water District 9.
Water District number nine, yes.
Water District 9, but does the water go with the property? Is it like the electric bill?
Yeah.
It goes with the property?
It goes with the property.
But they have the rights to turn that off, so they should have turned it off on non-payment, right?
They, I don't know their policy.
No.
They, well, of course not. Everybody wants it to rack up so you guys can own a million messed up houses, I guess. Man, okay, so there's probably going to be more.
Yeah.
Alrighty, um, other than, other than that, who do I talk to to get the ditch fixed that I've been complaining about?
You just did. We're going to, we're going to work that out.
Well, thank you.
We're going to take care of that one.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
That way I have control over it. We will take care of it.
Okay, um, any other, any other deals that we have? I can't think of anything. Um, we got all the, the, yeah, I think that's...
Jody, can you help them find out where to contact them?
Yes, yes.
Cool.
I'll give, as we walk out, I'll give you that number.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you so much.
We will take care of that then. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You guys have a great day. Do you want to put that somewhere? I'm sorry.
Terry, did I see him earlier?
He's up.
You want him?
Yep.
I know last time, Jake, that's you, you had checked in to find it out whether the corporation would be taxed exempt. Did you do that?
No, I thought, I know that that was mentioned and I moved on to the leasing and stuff.
Right.
So I, I...
We'll go down that road if we need to. But if you, that would be the easiest if we were just exempt altogether. I'll check into that.
I know we're not exempt on sales tax. So, and I did, I did check, I called the 40 AM, I checked with them. And, uh, there's, out of the private ambulance services in the state of Kansas, 45% of them license and tag their ambulances the same way that we did. So...
Through county?
Yep. If they're private. And even some of them, the county actually provides the ambulance to support them and then just the licenses, like you're talking about. To the services, yeah.
I know there's this one that Heather, I know you said all of them are done that way, but this one Heather thought was not, that it was tied up in your name.
Which one?
The one with the X.
Is it the 2013 or the 2020?
The one that, I thought the one that had an X on it. I can't see it.
I've got the...
You might just check with her when you leave.
I could, yeah, I can.
It's not important.
I was looking at the paperwork that I have to file with the state on the ownership. Because I have to file with the Board of Envestments, you guys, oh, actually on our ambulances. And I was looking to see if that had tag numbers on it, but it hasn't, just has the...
Jake, you're up here, but thank you. You were going to provide a copy of the insurance. Did you get that, Jake?
I emailed copies of our insurance cards and our commercial auto insurance policy. Jake can pay for both.
Okay. Are we named as insurance? And what's the liability amount?
Void.
You had that amount and we were just kind of guessing that that's what that applied to, not the other ones, so... Now, the other question we had is why do you deem it necessary to close your meetings? Is that my shoulder and pain?
Yeah, we've got something else to address with you too, if possible. Um, as far as the meetings go, I don't think it's ever been a question to us whether they were open or closed. I think we all assumed that they were closed meetings because we're a private corporation. But anybody can come to those at any time. If we had something personally related, we would just then go to an executive personnel situation, have everybody leave the room, come back to it. Um, but even in the past, we've not even had anybody show up. Our meetings are always on the first Wednesday of every month. And they rotate from station to station. We don't have a specific order. It's just literally Columbus, Baxter, Kalina. We have on occasion had to change them last minute due to training at a particular location. We'll just switch it back to another one. But, uh, the only time we've ever really denied anybody was recently at our annual meeting. We had somebody request to be on the agenda. Just approximately 12 hours after, uh, their kid was, or their, you know, yeah, their relative was dismissed from, sorry, not dismissed, but had quit and resigned their position with Cherokee County EMS Association. We didn't want any drama at that because our annual meeting is where all of our elections happen. We want to get in there, take care of business and be done with it.
I understand that, I really do. But it does concern me that, and I did read the text from David, that he consulted both of you. And the response wasn't anything what you just said. The response was because we are a 501(c) or...
501(c).
501(c), that our meetings are closed. So why did he make that response?
That was, that was the reason why. But again, I'm telling you...
Well, it shouldn't have been directed to that particular meeting or that particular request or something. But he said, our consultant, both of you, and our meetings are closed. So it sounds like a different story now, which I, I like this story a lot better.
The email that he sent out with us and it also included the other eight board members too. It wasn't just me and him. It wasn't just me and Sheldon that he consulted. All the, all of the executive board members were part of that email.
I remember now, since you said that, I've said, if you have any questions, we reach out to one of you. Which I was surprised when I first asked you about it, you didn't seem to know much about it, but...
Yeah, the, the, at the end of that, the, we just didn't want any drama there. We have to conduct our election and have our business done. We didn't want any of that there and that's what, what I thought was going to happen.
I don't have any questions, everybody. Any questions?
So there are open meetings then?
But we, we've never been told one way or the other. We don't mind if anybody comes at all. Anybody can come. It's, they're going to have to reach out to Terry to find out where they are.
Those papers are here now, that's why I'm like, I'm asking that because if they want to come to your meeting, they're, they're allowed to come.
The, the board said that they are closed, okay? That's the determination that came to our last meeting. But they also said they don't, they don't mind who, who shows up.
They said they are closed?
They, they said they are a closed meeting.
Well, that's, that's not too good.
Just because you can do something doesn't mean it's appropriate. But you refer to the board, you're talking four people?
No, we have, uh, eight.
How many?
Eight person board.
How many?
Eight person board.
Okay, so eight people voted on that?
It was a discussion.
No minutes?
It would be in the minutes, yes. I don't have any of that with me. We don't, we don't, the past couple of times this stuff just came up with the commission, we haven't got any notice that this is going to happen. Specifically with like the titles. Uh, last commission meeting, we found out about that like Friday. Well, I called you. It was, it was really last minute. Everybody on the board has a full-time job and it's, it's kind of hard for them to make a last-minute meeting happen.
Well, when we put something on the agenda like that, I mean, and the reason I told you that was up to you, but it was a matter of discussion. We weren't going to take any action without...
Well, yeah, it would just be nice to be...
Just like something we did today. Yes, it would be nice. And just the same way, you're saying your meetings are closed.
That, that is up to the board to decide, okay? Um, we are going to bring it up at this very next meeting.
You brought it up the last meeting.
We have a lot on our plate right now as far as building a new building. We haven't, we've been having special meetings to try to figure out things with a potential contractor we're going to use. We did discuss it. We would like to discuss it further when the full board is there. We did have one person that wasn't there last time. I'd like everybody to be there, everybody present. I know it's hard for the board to volunteer, but it would be better if all the members were there to have their discussion.
Um, refresh us on the structure of the board. Your executive board and then kind of a general board? How many members each?
The executive board has eight members.
And the other board, they're just pretty much come to eat once a year? I mean, there's not really much business that they input, they have?
I don't know that they, they just come to eat. They come to, uh, have the annual election.
Any questions? Matt, Corin?
No, I just...
I'd like to know how they avoid the COVID laws.
We're, we're sorting through some of that right now. But again, I would like all of the board members to be present and particularly one had an emergency with their family.
What if I wanted to come to your meeting tomorrow?
Huh?
What if I wanted to come to your meeting before you decide to have that meeting? I mean, we have a state law that says that, that meetings from people who get tax money are, are going to be open. So it's not a decision you make, it's a decision the state has already made.
The, the board is saying since they are a private organization...
Well, they're not because they get my money.
Okay. Again, it's, it's...
So if we don't give you my money, will you still be a private organization?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we would.
I move you don't give them any money for a building or anything else.
Well, we passed the budget for this year, but I'm going to have second thoughts next year on appropriations, for sure. Even if they change their policy, it's the spirit of not wanting to be open that's very concerning to me.
I never wanted to go to one of our meetings, but I want to be able to.
You're referring to this one incident, but yet you're telling us your meetings are closed.
We've never had anybody show up. We've never had anybody show up, we are just now looking into this, like I said, I would like all eight members to be there, so we can sit through everything, and I'm sure it's not gonna be a problem. Is it, is it possible to get a ten-minute executive session for?
We don't have a cause for it, we do follow open meetings law, and there are very specific reasons that you can go into executive session. There's, I don't see a, a reason that would match that statutory. Thank you, guys.
Can we ask to be put on the agenda for?
Anytime.
Following a meeting after our next AMS meeting?
Yeah, just come up here after your meeting, and we'll get you a contact agenda.
Okay, thank you guys for your time.
Is there anyone here over the veil?
I think they're out in the hallway, let me get a look.
Our property is in a trust, and there is a, supposedly a road that is a county facility. That we is, we didn't know, we've been there since the fifties, and we never knew it was a county road. There's an individual that's trying to get access to go down that road, which is, all it is is just the side of our field. And if we don't want him having access, he's troubled, so we're just trying to find out what we can do.
I think we're in the process of trying to confirm whether or not that's a county road, but if it is, that's county, that anybody can access, whether it's built.
Nobody's accessed it in years, I mean, it's all grown up, and it's just right at the edge of our field. So, the county's never maintained it, uh, and they said they won't maintain it. So, we just need to know what, I mean, you can, you can tell, I don't know if you know where it's at, I mean, I've got pictures that show the side of the field, you can tell there's no road.
Yeah, that's, there's a lot of places throughout the county that, that very thing, I'm surprised there's not even, there's even a path.
Yeah, we've used it, since, like I say, since the fifties when the family moved there, but, um, we've always had a gate up there and kept it locked, just because it's out in the country, people, kids go down that road and cause problems and steal. Yeah, we got a pecan grove in the back of that, and they get back in there, so.
Did you get any light shed on that?
As of right now, everything that they've got downstairs shows it's covered.
This man that is trying to get access, though, he owned the property behind us, obviously, he had, he kept that section. But there's a bunch of people coming up from Arkansas buying all the land, so he sold all his land over there at a very good price, and landlocked himself, so now, since he's landlocked, getting in the other direction, he wants to come and use ours, or the road up there.
If this were a question where he had just been using that, and it was private property, that kinda gets into cloudy waters, but to me, this is pretty clear cut, if it's a county road, anybody has a right to be on it.
If it's a county road, and then I called down there and visited with your superintender, and he said they would never maintain it, they haven't maintained it, they never will, they don't plan on it. So, in cases like that before, haven't they given the old road like that back to the landowners?
We have.
And would this be such a case?
In, in certain circumstances, when approached, I mean, you could make that appeal, to ask us to vacate it, is what it would be. Whether or not the board would do that, if the property is landlocked, I don't know, can't speak for us, but I would say that might be a, a first step if you wanna go down that road.
'Cause I think when it's south of there, south of you guys, there was an, an old road years ago that used to go to the river, and you guys shut that down and gave it back to the landowner.
Usually when we do that, we get ahold of the neighboring property owners to see if they have any objection to it, so that might be a stickler, but that's a good thing you pointed out.
Where's this guy's property at?
He is, he's back here.
This one right here, just that little, just that little square right there?
Yeah, I don't know, you can see him more than that, Sherry.
Well, he's, he did own like the whole part thirty, Coca-Cola, it's been different things, that whole area back there. I think he owned all of that, but he sold it all, except, I think a hundred acres, or a hundred and forty acres or something, which connects in that corner behind us. Which is behind the pecan grove. Like, this is.
This is, it was a hundred and ten, it was a county.
It pins there.
Well, that's why I was wondering, what's, there's no road here. I mean, here's the county, and here's the so-called county road, what we own, down here. And it, what's, uh, there's no road here, I mean. Is, this, you say this is his property, you're going to?
Yeah.
All right. This thing's flooded, well, there's no power.
How's he get there?
How's he getting over here?
Well, the map was further down, to where it showed you on the bottom side. Yeah, I don't know.
See, I think this is ours, and that's his, I mean, you can see that, that there's, there's no road there on this side.
Yeah, that blue that goes across, that's not a road, that's just the.
That's what I'm saying.
It's a property line.
So, how's he getting to his house?
There's no house. He doesn't have any.
How's he getting to his land?
The ground he sold.
The ground he sold is where he was accessed, and now that he sold the ground, he wants to come in there and drive through our place to get it. We don't want him on our property, he, he's troubled.
Yeah, he landlocked himself, I saw on all his access.
He can go down here, but he, he's not allowed to, but there's no road here, then, correct?
No, right, he would go through at the end of that road there, into his field.
He'd go down.
Here's the, yeah, here's the picture that would be the end of that road, and then he's got a gate across there, or a, or just a, uh, a wire across there, he's got a lock on it, but that's into his land, so.
Michelle, did Jake come up with a form, or has he requested a vacation?
I haven't seen anything.
I would just put that on the agenda when it's next convenient for you folks, and, um, a request to vacate, and we'll address it.
Does he own this, this, and that, or what's he on?
As far as we know, he does.
He owns, he owns all that too.
That, that right to the top of that is our ground, and that, those trees in the corner there.
This is your ground?
Yeah, that, and over, on over this way, all of that.
On that orange, yeah, we'll do that when I come back.
Yeah.
You folks live locally?
I live in Miami.
Okay, that's, what'd you say?
I'm in Wescott.
Okay.
He lives there.
My favorite cell phone.
But anyway.
We don't have any of those papers in the.
You don't need, you don't need to go ask?
If you would.
Or I'm thinking, hey, there's something recently. Hey, but I'm not here, so I'll ask Carla.
Now, you come back, and we'll look at a more broad map to see who the property owners are, and again, uh, to go through that process, we do have somebody that checks with other owners to see, and we'll see where it goes.
He basically just landlocked himself, but he did.
Yeah, now he's trying to force his way down our, our ways. We didn't even know that was a road, a county road, it's never been used by anybody, so.
And he's a bully, he just said, I mean, he didn't come and ask, I mean, just like, I'm gonna build a road down through there, and.
And if it's, and if it's county road, then how will we know how far out the road goes, or?
Well, there's, what's the matter with this one?
Well, they, they're very, just have to see what they, yeah.
Well, we don't.
Just because that path, let's just say it's a thirty-foot road, and here's the path. The, you would assume it might be in the middle of the road, it might be the, here's the road over here, I mean, it, the dedicated road might be here, you're not gonna know without a survey.
Backwood used, backwood, and backwood used to run the right down there, so you gotta turn into the pecan, now that road goes straight into, so the, the flood's washed out.
There's a ditch that goes through there, and it's washed out, and then.
So, the road can be washed out.
You can see all the trees that are growing, so.
Well, it's, been polluted, it was, uh, years ago when they were done that, and polluted as a county road, and never, they never made a road out of it.
Right.
But that doesn't mean it's not a road.
Yeah, that's, long as it's a county.
But, um, you wrote up the right thing, that's what you need to do, the next step is, not saying how the board is gonna lean on that, but that is the next step. Make that request.
I don't.
'Cause that would save you guys in the future too, and then if this guy does go back there and wants to develop something, then you guys are gonna go in there and build a road.
Um, would you write down a contact number, because if there is a form, I'll get it to you, well, I can just get it to you.
Sure.
But, go ahead and write, yeah, write the contact. Thank you. So, just get on the agenda, whenever convenient for you both, okay?
How often do you have meetings?
Every Monday.
Separate holidays?
Okay, how, so, is, if there is a form, if there's not a form, how?
If there is, I'm gonna make contact with you.
Okay, if there's not, how do we pursue it?
You just come.
There's a, there's a form.
I, I'm almost positive there is a form.
Just get on the agenda for Monday, bring it on back, we'll get it on the agenda for next Monday.
Put him for Monday?
If you're one of you.
Okay, I'll put you guys down.
Yeah.
We can be first selecting the tour. Okay, so, what about like, is nine-twenty okay? I mean, that's, it starts at nine, but we always do rubber upgrades, maybe nine-fifteen, yeah, pumping at nine-fifteen. Okay.
Thank you all three guys, we appreciate it.
Thanks for making.
Yes.
Do you, is that property, do we have a company? Well, we'll get that in the form, never mind, okay, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Is this Sheriff?
Yeah, it is. Is this the hallucinogen?
Are you available, Sheriff?
Whenever.
I kinda put you on the spot, I'm sorry, I should've asked you earlier, I just texted him right before the meeting started to ask his opinion on what we're going to consider next agenda item, whether or not we want to ban some of these unregulated hallucinogenic ingredient products that are often sold at convenience stores, and I knew we wanted to reach out to our health director, but I, I should've thought about you too, Sheriff, so you know what I'm talking about?
I, I have no opinion on it, 'cause I haven't seen anything, and I'm not prepared to make any kind of, I'm here for something completely different.
Corey, I forgot to buy them for you to try.
Yeah, I'd, I'd be glad to look into it, but I haven't, I haven't seen anything.
It was recommended by the attorney's office, and county attorney's office, I thought I had that pamphlet here, you can read through, but you have no opinion, that's good, so.
I haven't seen anything, so I'd like to, before I make these statements, one way or another, I definitely wanna research it.
Let's see, you know, uh. So, you're here, would you like an executive session, is that why you're here?
Just whenever's convenient for you all, I got plenty of time, so.
Um, I think we gotta take that before we do our other, we can do that hallucinogenic, and, uh.
Nothing else we can do.
Patent's here for.
If you have time to research and give an opinion, or if you can take it from like.
Right, yeah. Does anybody have that pamphlet?
It's.
About the hallucinogen, yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
How about you put this on, this is what was presented to us.
Absolutely, I'd love to. Absolutely, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, and then we'll talk about that next week.
We're doing that table now.
Yeah, our attorney will be here then, and we'll make a decision whether or not to.
Thank you, be happy to look into it. Thank you.
Hello, Under Sheriff?
Do you want to do the, like, now?
Yes, did, is this for the, is this for, um, employees?
Non-alien, yes.
Okay, how many, how many minutes do you need?
Oh, yeah.
I would make a motion that we have a non-alien, uh, executive session, non-alien employee with the sheriff and under sheriff, and the reason, but ten.